I now call the order, the September 12th, 2023, regular meeting Board of Trustees. Time being 6:30 PM, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Negative roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Daly. Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Proton McDonald. Mayor Shosi.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No.
Are there conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening?
No.
Alright, next we'll move on to a public comment. Individuals wishing to speak publicly on non-agenda items are asked to approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you will be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, Dawn Peacock. Okay, so a little quick one here. I'm talking out of turn here, so I'm just speaking for myself. I'm helping Safe Routes to School with analytics, and when I ask them if they're ready for me, they tell me that they've sent in a few MOU drafts to the town and they were not accepted by the town attorney. I don't know why this is taking so long. Obviously, I am not privy to the information. But it's been going on since at least March that I know of. But since then, kids have already had summer break and are back in school again for a new year. There have been kids seen crossing I-25. And Safe Routes for School can't even apply for grants or get anything started until the town gets the MOU done. So I am asking the board to make this a priority and maybe put it on a work session agenda or something so we can get this wrapped up. Safe Routes for School has used almost all their entire budget on the MOUs they submitted and have absolutely nothing to show for it. Please prioritize this MOU so they can get started on grant applications and other planning. And if for some reason the town does not want to work with Safe Routes for School, then have that conversation with them because there's a lot of dedicated people waiting to volunteer their time to help create Safe Routes to Schools for kids in this town.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carlton Von Trager. I was just wanting to talk with the board about giving it an approval for running a detail business out of my garage on the weekends. So I own Rocky Mountain Premier Detailing, I started about three months ago. I live in Mountain View, or yeah, Mountain View Ranch. And I do this on my side, I work a full-time job and my wife does too now. So looking to do maybe one to two cars a weekend, that's it. Everything's done inside of my garage with the doors closed as far as the equipment goes, aside from washing outside, which I keep the power washer inside, so there's no noise. I'm very respectful of, you know, my neighbors. I actually have quite a bit of support from them. So they've actually wanted me to do their cars, they've said that I've been great. My noise levels are low, I'm having a problem with one neighbor specifically who's causing issues with me doing this, I'm just trying to make a better life for my family. I worked really hard for this and I just want to abide by, you know, all the laws and do this the right way. But I need this and I'll do anything to kind of, you know, work around what we need to or just looking to get approval for that. So this specific neighbor has harassed me multiple times about this and I'm starting to get calls from the reclamation. And it was a very aggressive phone call, threatening me in multiple ways, telling me I couldn't even do my business mobily. And the neighbors harassed me multiple times, walking up to me while I'm playing outside with my kids, talking to me about things, threatening to take me to court. Again, over, I'm not creating any noise and that was his issue. Being lied about with the amount of traffic that comes through, we have babysitters, we have a big family. The only cars I'm doing is one to two a weekend max and sometimes not even any. So usually it stays to about one. Just looking again to, you know, just to get accepted for this and like, I'm just trying to make a better life, it's the only way I can afford to live here. And, you know, seven days a week, it's something that I have to do, so anyways.
Thank you.
Mario Quinones, Park Meadows. Mayor, trustees, good to see you guys. I just kind of wanted to go over the Town's Municipal Code, which is Section 4 dot 03 dot 19, which is the home occupation. I'm here in support of Carlton. You know, I think there's a lot of good things in the code. It shall be conducted entirely within the dwelling. It should be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling. It should not exceed half of the floor area, of course, I understand we don't want people turning their garage into a mechanic shop. You know, there's a lot of good things in this code. There shall be no offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare noticeable beyond the property line. But then it also says, "The home occupation shall provide additional off-street parking areas adequate to accommodate all needs by the home occupation." Then it goes on to list, "A home occupation shall not include any of the following, which is the animal hospital, long-term care facility, restaurant, bed and breakfast, group home, pawn shop, adult-oriented use." And then number eight of the code is vehicle repair, servicing detailing or towing if vehicles are dispatched from the premises or brought to the premises or parked or stored on the premises or in an adjacent street. So I'm just wondering, you know, I know there's a lot of companies that operate out of their garage here, but they don't register with the town because of the code. They'll know they'll get denied and the town's losing out on tax revenue. And people who are looking to start a small business and make a better life for themselves and the family and provide a service to the community are having to do it under under the cover of darkness, it almost seems like. So I'm just wondering, I know I was here when the code was, when we went over the code and everybody voted on it, and like I said, there's a lot of good things on there, I'm just wondering. And I know there's an appeal process, I'm just wondering, could it be a base-by-base type of deal where, you know, maybe we could change it to one vehicle in your garage? I don't understand why a person couldn't work on one vehicle as a certified mechanic in his garage with making no noise or a detail company couldn't do one car in their garage. You know, some of these companies want to do the right thing, they pay for their insurance, they register as an LLC, they contact the city and then they get shut down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item we will move on to is the proclamations, there's going to be two proclamations this evening. The first of which is going to be National Cleanup Day. Oh, Cities and Towns Week. Wasn't following my schedule there. So, "Whereas municipal government is the government closest to the most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact on its residents. And whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas municipal government officials and employees share responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by the municipal government in our lives. And whereas the Colorado Municipal League's member cities and towns have joined together to reach students or to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Colorado that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now, therefore, I, Kayla Shosi, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of September 10th through the 16th, 2023, as Cities and Towns Week. In the Town of Wellington, and I encourage all citizens, elected officials, and employees to ensure this week is celebrated accordingly." Alright, do I have anybody to present it to?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next one is going to be National Cleanup Day. So whereas the Town of Wellington in partnership with the Wellington, Colorado Main Streets Program will sponsor National Cleanup Day on September 16th, 2023. That's this Saturday. Whereas the Town of Wellington and the Wellington, Colorado Main Streets Program recognize the need to protect the health and beauty of our community as well as our nation now and in the future. And whereas National Cleanup Day represents the vital partnership between our town, local land managers, local businesses, and nonprofit organizations. And whereas National Cleanup Day is an opportunity for Wellington residents, organizations, and businesses to join together and take pride in the health and beauty of our community by collectively volunteering to clean up neighborhoods, parks, schools, and businesses. And whereas when we participate in activities such as National Cleanup Day, we set a good example for our children, teaching them we care about protecting our land and our open spaces, which in turn promotes economic vitality, strengthens community and property values, and preserves our environment. And whereas when we partner as a community to provide a cleaner, safer environment, we encourage everyone to take pride in their community, creating a bridge to citizen engagement. Now, therefore, I, Kayla Shosi, Mayor of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2023, as National Cleanup Day in the Town of Wellington, Colorado, and urge all residents, businesses, civic groups, government agencies, and citizens to participate in this event by helping their community and supporting efforts to protect our land, water, and air." Anybody present that?
Okay.
Mayor, just a point of information, I believe trustee Daly is on the Zoom meeting. I see her name here, so if the clerk could potentially promote her to a panelist, I believe she's here also.
Thank you for mentioning that. Okay. Next we'll have a presentation on the 2024 regular election given by Mr. Ethan Moose, Town Clerk, Mr. Moose.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees, I'm Ethan Moose, the Town Clerk. It's my pleasure to be presenting on the 2024 regular election preparations for this year. The purpose of this presentation is going to be to provide some relevant information and seek guidance from the board regarding the 2024 regular election in the Town of Wellington. This slide goes over some summary information that's relevant for this upcoming election. CRS Title 31 Article 10 governs elections in municipalities in Colorado for statutory municipalities. The regular elections per the statute are held on the first Tuesdays, I'm sure you know, of April and even numbered years, the next election of which in the Town of Wellington will be April the 2nd of 2024. And there will be three trustee terms expiring for this election. Those will be Mayor Proton McDonald, trustee Daly, and trustee Gator. There are now on your screen some relevant stats regarding the electors of the Town of Wellington. As of August 22nd, 2023, Laramie County Elections Office reports that there are 7,778 active electors, 757 inactive electors, for a total of 8,535 electors. The voter status, it's key to note, can be changed from active to inactive via Laramie County if the, if the Laramie County Clerk and Recorder receives correspondence or receives no correspondence or returned ballots from electors' addresses via the United States Postal Service. And then an inactive elector can update their status by voting in person or updating their registration. Okay, this slide covers the statutory election formats that are available for the Town of Wellington, first of which being polling place. This is a one-day in-person opportunity for electors to vote. There is an option for absentee ballots to be mailed and requires a minimum of three election judges. The ballots are then counted after the polls close on election day. The second format to note would be the mail ballot election. In this case, mail ballots are mailed and received during a window as required by state statute. They're automatically sent to active electors and there is an option for absentee ballots to be mailed as well. Ballots will then be collected and counted after the polls close following the window that I previously mentioned. The final option, which is not applicable in this case, is a coordinated election, which is conducted in conjunction with Laramie County. And the reason why this is not applicable to the current election is statutorily, towns have regular elections that are off-cycle from county regular elections. So in this case, coordinated elections will not apply. So this is some relevant information regarding the history of elections in the town. There are sort of two main categories that this graph should depict, the first being a an indication of elector participation as a percentage over the course of the past four years of elections from 2016 to 2022. While I don't have accurate information for the 2016 election, I do have approximate numbers of electors and numbers of ballots counted in the 2018, 2020, and 2022 elections. It's key to note that the 2016 election and 2018 election, regular elections, were both polling place. The 2020 and 2022 were both mail elections. The second category of information that I'd like to highlight in this graph is the cost per vote, which you can see a breakdown basically of budget, budgeted, expended, and expenditure as a percentage of budget over the course of these four elections. The two real general trend categories that I want to highlight here are first that in the elector participation category, the participation has steadily increased from 2016 to 2022. The transition from polling place to mail elections has increased the percentage of elector participation by a factor of over two from 2018 to 2020. And then mail ballot elections exhibited an upward trend in percentage of elector participation by a factor of 1.4 from 2020 to 2022. In the cost trend analysis category, it's key to highlight that the total cost of elections in the town have steadily increased, and this is largely due to the fact that the population of electors is increasing. But the, by contrast, cost per vote has decreased over time with the transition from polling place to mail elections, which reduced the cost per vote by a factor of 0.73 from 2018 to 2020. And then the mail ballot election exhibiting a downward trend in cost per vote by a factor of 0.68 from 2020 to 2022. Okay, some other relevant facts that will bear on this election. In most municipalities around Colorado, they have the option to appoint the Town Clerk as the election official, which is then authorized to also appoint election judges. You can see Resolution Number 30-2020 in your packet, which provides an example of how this will look via resolution. Other municipalities tend to pay election judges at a rate of approximately $15 an hour as a relevant factor for costs. Election judges and watchers are allowed in both types of elections that are available to the town, poll and mail. And then the Colorado revised statutes require different timelines for the different elections between polling place and mail elections. Additionally, information presented in this presentation largely regards regular elections. Special elections have different requirements and statistics in the Town of Wellington over time. And then finally, the town is planning to host a candidate information session scheduled currently for the Fourth of December at 6:00 PM. Okay, at this point, I want to take a pause to ask the board if they have any questions on information that's been presented in the presentation thus far.
Trustee Wigan?
None right at the moment.
Trustee Teets?
Not right now.
Trustee Gator?
I don't have questions, definitely have things want to discuss, but no questions so far.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
No questions, thank you, great presentation so far.
Trustee Mason? No questions. No questions.
Okay, in that case, I have a few questions for you. Gotcha. So there are three real key decision points that I'd like to discuss with you at this point. Those three decision points are listed here on your screen. Really, really the three decision points are, should the town conduct a polling place or a mail ballot election for the regular election in 2024? Should the Town Clerk and/or Delegee be designated as the election official for the regular election and have the authority to appoint election judges? And then finally, should the town budget for a single election in 2024 or multiple? I'm happy to provide any additional information or discuss what recommendations staff have for these decision points. But at this point, it would be appropriate, Mayor Shosi, to sort of go through each of these and provide staff with guidance on all.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll just go down the board one-on-one on these and we'll just go. So the first question, we'll go to trustee Wigan, what your thoughts are, and then we'll move around, then we'll move down the bullet points. So the first one to you, trustee Wigan, would be, do you believe that we should conduct a polling place or mail-in for 2024?
This is a tough one. I would really prefer polling, doing it in person, but you do see, you know, major increase in participation once we do have the mail-in, so like I say, I'm still contemplating that. But the way we currently have it, even if it was in person, everybody can get an absentee ballot if they so desire, correct?
I believe there are specific cases in the case of if the town conducts a polling place election when absentee ballots are authorized, I think there has to be a demonstration of reason for the absence. I believe that's correct, I'd have to review the statute and provide you with more detailed information on what that might look like, and if that's something you're interested in me sort of clearing up and providing with you, I'd be happy to do that, okay?
Trustee Teets?
Okay, so I have a question as far as the question that was just asked. I understand that you're not aware of what that absentee ballot consists of. Is there a way for trustees to say that we will accept a request for an absentee ballot?
I'm not aware of that at this time, trustee Teets, I'd be happy to do some more research on that to specifically answer it, unless Ms. Garcia or Mr. Seppians have anything to add.
I'm not exactly clear what you're asking. Would a trustee say they would accept an absentee ballot?
Yes, could we as a board say that we would allow without restriction, so disability, traveling, whatnot? I know there is for certain elections, Laramie County, stuff like that. But as far as us as trustees, can we not make a vote and say we will allow people to request an absentee ballot if they just so choose?
The town's elections are governed by a state statute, municipal election code, and that's not an area where there's opportunity to vary. So we'd have to follow the state law and just exactly the requirements for absentee ballots, I just don't recall off the top of my head, but no.
Okay.
The conduct of an election is governed very, very explicitly by state law, especially in regard to absentee ballots.
Got it, so that answers my question as far as that goes. I do support a polling place over the mail ballot election with the absentee and military ballots, of course, being able to be allowed. My main thing is when I look at the statistics of, we've had a lot of controversial items that have come before voters over the last few years, and I have a feeling that that population increase for who voted had some to do with the fact of their water bills looking the way they do. So I think that that's one of the more powerful reasons we see that uptick that, and we also see an increase in population, so I have a sneaking suspicion that we're going to see an increase in votes as we see an increase in population. Should the Town Clerk or Delegee be designated? What have we done in the past? Is that something that we've done with Town Clerk previously?
It's been mixed. There have been instances where the board has explicitly named election judges, and there have been other instances where the Town Clerk has been appointed and authorized to do that. State statute does indicate that it is the Town Board's responsibility, but that the clerk can be authorized to fill that role.
We'll get to the further bullet points.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know we were just staying on the one, got it, I apologize.
You're good, you're good. Trustee Gator?
Unmute myself. So I appreciate you putting all this together, Ethan, it's very comprehensive. And I think that there are a couple of things, yes, the cost per voter has gone down, but the actual cost of the town has gone up significantly. And I agree that we have definitely seen a higher turnout. I think that part of that does have to do with, it is easier with the mail-in ballots, but I think a lot of that also has to do with, both in the 2020 election and the 2022 election, there were a lot of issues in town with water and bills. And then we also saw a lot of candidates that were actively out there campaigning and working to get people out to vote. So I think there are multiple things that led to that. From my perspective, and I believe there is the ability for anyone to request an absentee ballot. Looking through Chapter 10 right now, so I don't have the exact numbers, but I know that there have been other areas that have done elections where it's a polling place election, but anyone can register, and in Colorado, there's even a permanent absentee ballot that you can just sign up to always get a mail-in ballot forever for every election. So I think there definitely are options to do that. But I think that one, the funds that we would expend on doing a mail-in election, because that requires us to mail ballots to every single active voter, so even on the election that was this last year, which was a high turnout, we still are paying to mail, and that's the most expensive portion of that, is mailing out those ballots to people that don't vote. And then I think it also does just open up opportunities for, I know there were people that missed election and thought they put their ballot in the right place, but put it in the wrong box, and so their vote doesn't get counted when you do a ballot or polling place election. It's very simple, and if you do request an absentee ballot, you're actually doing that, understanding the process for going through that. And so my preference would be to focus on staying with a polling place election. And then with clarification, again, I believe that we can clarify that with the code that anyone can register for an absentee ballot for any reason. And then we send those out to people that request that, and then they're able to submit those. The other thing too, with a polling place election, is it allows you to have results much more quickly. And so from the standpoint of election judges, the time-consuming portion is going through and doing the signature verification. And so that usually is what ends up pushing the results out multiple days, and sometimes for larger elections out weeks, is just because there's so much time having to verify signatures. And there are a lot of issues with that, where people's signature changes and then their vote doesn't get counted, then they've got to come back and cure it, so it just, it raises a whole bunch of issues that I think would be addressed by just doing like a polling place election.
Thank you, trustee Gator. And yeah, you're correct, absentees can be requested by anybody. Trustee Daly?
Okay, I'm trying to turn on video, just so you know, it's, the ability's not available, it's not because I don't want to show my face, so anybody's watching, so you know. There is absolutely no question on this point of how I stand and in my opinion on it. We should have a mail ballot election. There are so many reasons why, the first one is if any purpose in what our role is, it is to represent everyone of the Town of Wellington, those who show up at meetings and more so the larger, much more significant, larger population that doesn't. People who are here at the meeting will be very well aware, and regardless of all of our methods of trying to let people know polling places and absentee ballots and anything like that, will not get the message. We constantly look for opportunities to reach more residents in every communication that we do. Before us is an opportunity to have a proven method of higher participation of voters that historically and consistently in the past have shown up through mail-in ballots. If we were to go back in history and provide a less convenient opportunity for people to vote, we are saying, we know more people will vote through mail, but we're choosing we know more people will vote through mail, but we're choosing not to hear those people. That would be the message. That would be the the voice of Wellington and how we would be perceived, and that would be the truth. We know more people will vote through a mail in ballot. Therefore, I want to hear from more people, and I want more people to participate in this very, very important process of elections. This is the most important part of our country in my mind. It's the fact that people get to have their voice. So we have more people who will voice their opinion through mail in ballots. Specifically through Wellington, we have historically done mail in ballots for the last several, a couple of years, as shown in that last diagram in the in there. So that would be a consistent process that people are looking forward to and will expect from our town. So any changes to that will cause confusion, will cause a lot of questions of concern and harm. Mail in ballots are more accessible. A more flexible timeframe for voting will reach, of course, more people, like I said before. And then and I understand the argument that I'm hearing is, well, anybody can get absentee ballot. Well, what does that involve? That involves several extra steps in order to get that. And I'm sure everybody here is like, oh, well, it's simple because they know. But if somebody wasn't aware and didn't have that knowledge and then knew that they'd have to then in their head says, oh, I have to do something extra to do this. Would it be as convenient? Would it be as easy? Absolutely not. Would they put in that extra effort? Not likely. So I don't think the the option of if we were choosing between one or the other mailing ballot or polling place, there is any question here of us knowing we'll get more people to vote by mail and ballot and then choosing not to do that. Um, Laramie County is a leader and a shining example of mail in ballots. And of course, all of our residents who are, of course, Laramie County residents have received and participated in mailing ballots for a significant amount of time. This is the expectation. This is what they will be expecting. And I think that us doing something different on our own is fruitless, to be honest. And if the decision to go to only polling places was because we'll save more money, well, we're sitting in that chair, I'm supposed to represent everybody in the town of Wellington. If any money was worth it, was would be to hear as many people's voices as possible. So no question for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Trust you, Mason.
Every sitting member of this board was elected via mail in ballot. If there's some suspicion that of impropriety or that one of us was somehow illegally or illegitimately elected. Well, regarding Wellington elections, I've not seen a single iota of evidence that proves that theory to be true. This is not the national stage. We're a small municipality. And if there's some idea that someone stuck in ballot box in Wellington, I believe that to just be plain false. So unless we want to disenfranchise two thirds of the participating Wellington electorate from a 10% turnout, the last time we used polling places in 2018 to a nearly 30% turnout in 2022, then I would suggest that we continue using mail in ballots as our election methodology. We want to ensure that we are maximizing participation from our community as this board is beholden to our electorate. Shrinking the participation size of our electorate only serves to benefit those who believe that they can win elections based on a substantially smaller participation rate. Increasing voter turnout ensures the voice of our community is heard to the fullest extent. So therefore, I do support a mail in ballot election for Wellington.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I I I support the mail in ballot. This isn't the national scale. This is the town of Wellington. A lot of people that live in this town don't work in this town. A lot of people that live in this town work jobs like me, for example, where you're you're gone by six, you're not back till six. Trying to get back to place a vote is nearly impossible. We don't get a national holiday to do it for our town. We don't do a national holiday to do it for the nation. You can see, I mean, the fire department had a recent election. It was polling place only. Their numbers were super low. Trustee Gator, do you know how many people voted in the fire election?
I do not know the number off the top of my head. Christina's thinking it's somewhere between two and 300.
Okay. Thank you. There was a lot of issues facing our fire department. That's a very small turnout. Issues that are just as big as our town's water. It's our town safety that they serve. So, yeah, I think that that for us to have a viable election that represents our community and gives ease of access for the community to vote. We should do what's what's been done since 2020 and maintain the mail in ballots, in my opinion. Saying that, you know, they can request an absentee ballot. Where's the money savings if all those people go and request absentee ballots and we're still mailing them? Kind of just seems like a way to skate around the idea of a mail in ballot, but still say, hey, let's do mail in ballots. So, yeah, I'm all for mailing. Next one is going to be clerk. Let me go back down to this bullet point. Should the town clerk and or delegate be designated as the election official of the town for the regular election and have authority to appoint election judges? I'm going to mix it up and go backwards. Trustee Mason.
Mr. Moose, I have absolute confidence in your ability to run a regular election. I I would be absolutely fine with you being the designated town official and and your ability to appoint election judges. So.
Thank you, trustee Daly.
I agree, Mr. Moose, Clerk Moose, you will be the most knowledgeable and the expert of all election things forever after this or during this process for elections. I think that makes you obviously the most capable and aware person to do this. We also already appointed you as clerk through this board as that effort. So I I I trust that and want to hold that designation to the town clerk.
Thank you, trustee Gator.
No, I think that's fine. Signing town clerk as the election official is fine with me.
Thank you, trustee Teets.
I have no issue with Ethan handling this.
Thank you. Trust you, Wigan.
I wouldn't see any advantage of not having you, so.
I concur. Should the town budget for a single election or a multiple election in 2024? We'll start with trustee Gator.
I guess this would be the only question I have for Mr. Moose. Was there something that you're anticipating needing an additional election for this year?
Thank you for the question, trustee Gator. In the case of the budget for 2023, the GL for elections is currently at zero. The intent there, I believe, would be that there would not be a regular election scheduled in 2023. However, there is an opportunity in any year for a special election to be requested by the electors. That can be done by several different means that are statutorily required. And when required, obviously incur expenses. My recommendation and staff's recommendation would be that we include some contingency plan in the budget for special elections both during regular and off election years. Does that answer your question, trustee Gator?
That that does, because I was like, I was like, I'm not aware of any outstanding petitions, but that makes a good point. I would, I would be fine with budgeting for a single election and then maybe having a contingency. So I know our typical elections were around 12,000, so maybe budgeting around $5,000 or so in case of a special election. So that would be my recommendation if we are going to budget for multiple elections.
Thank you, trustee Gator. Trust you, Teets.
So I have a question regarding this. When you, when we as trustees sit up here, if there is an item that we would request to send to a special election that is a possibility, or can us as trustees add an item to the actual ballot when you're doing the elections for trustees? Can we add additional items to that ballot?
I believe so. My understanding of the way that ballot items typically are accepted by the town is that they're initiated by petitions or referenda. I I believe that there is some option for the board to include items on a ballot. Would you like to answer that?
When it, when it's initiated by the citizens, it's called an initiative when it's referred to the ballot by the or it can also be referred to the ballot by the trustees. So yes, it's called a referred measure and the the board can do that at a special election or a regular election.
Got it. So and this could involve like budgeting items, anything? Is there restrictions on it?
Taber, there's a lot of there.
Okay, so my idea was more along the lines of a recreation center of actually sending that out and seeing what our citizens feel about budgeting and setting up a CIP to specifically start a recreation planning.
So let's.
Got it. I want beer, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, thank you for sharing. So do you? What are your thoughts on single or or multiple?
I support doing the single with additional allocations, just in case for a special election if need be. Do you need an amount set or? Okay, perfect.
Trust you, Wigan.
I agree with the same.
Perfect.
As the reg- yes, the regular plus a little bit extra for the special, just in case.
Thank you. Special election would be held, say, if a trustee decided to back down from the board and we had more than I don't know, 60, 90 days before another election period, we would need to hold a special election, or is that just an option?
I thought the mayor gets to a point.
No.
Nope.
No, it's, no, the Board of Trustees, I believe, has 60 days to appoint if if a trustee or mayor, Mayor Pratone would resign has 60 days to appoint, and if an appointment is not made, then a special election would be called.
And does a special election have to be called?
Yes, if an appointment is not made.
Thank you. So I think, yeah, I think being prepared for, you know, plan for the best, but or, yeah, hope for the best, but be prepared for the worst kind of deal. I think it'd be wise, you know, to, yeah, I'm I'm along the board with you guys in that sense. We need to at least have something in the purse to be prepared because we don't want it to hit our budget and have to pull from other things and get caught, you know, in that situation. So that's, that's my direction. Trust you, Mason.
Yeah, I would almost suggest that, obviously, for the main election for 2024, I, again, I would, I would say that we should budget for a mail in election. As far as a special election goes, obviously, elections are expensive. I would actually almost say in that case, perhaps we should budget for a polling place election in the event that we do need a special election of some variety. That way, we're not spending the whole 14. Well, we've got an expanded amount in 2022 for 14,624, whereas we budgeted for 32,000. If if we budget for a full 32,000, I have confidence that we will be able to do almost two mail in elections in the event that we did need a special election. So I suppose it depends on how much we plan on budgeting for the mail in election. And if we can cover that with with that budget amount and be able to do two as as far as a special election goes in the event that's needed, I think that makes a lot of sense. But if we do want to do something that, you know, is a little bit more cost effective as far as for the boards goes, I would almost say maybe we consider doing a polling pace election in the event that we need a special election. That way we're not budgeting quite as much there.
So make it super sweet and simple. You would say you would budget for multiple.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Trust you, Daly.
Hi, given, given just this last year, I think it would be irresponsible for us to not budget for multiple elections. There's very real and possible needs for special elections at this time. For example, we saw some petitions from electors initiated, not completed and not brought to ballot, obviously, but we we saw several measures last last year that we could have potentially needed to have a special election because of the time requirements. So we've seen this before this board already. And the other real reason, right, is if somebody were to not be in their role and we need to have a special election to to fill our board. Given that we have real reasons and historically, even within this last year, initiatives that would have had caused for special election, we need to, we need to budget for multiple elections.
Thank you. All right. Other, other, does anybody have any further comments that they want to present at this time for direction? Start with trustee Teets.
I don't have anything.
Trust you, Gator.
Great. Did you call me or trustee Daly?
I I called you, yes.
Oh, okay, sorry. I was like, I wasn't sure which name. So a couple of things that I did want to, I guess, highlight. So section 31 dash 10 dash 102 deals with absentee voters, and there are no restrictions on who can request an absentee ballot. So to answer the question that trustee Teets and trustee Wigan had, there are no restrictions on that. Also, kind of the question that you had raised, Mayor, about, well, if those people just vote anyways and we don't save anything, the savings comes from, if you look at what we had, the cost did not come from mailing the ballots to the 1,000 or 2,000 people that voted. The ballots are mailed to the 5,900 active voters in 2020 and the 7,100 107 active voters in 2022. So there are significant cost saves, even if every one of the 2,000 people that voted by mail in the 2022 election requested an absentee ballot, we would still be at about a third the cost of the cost of sending out ballots to every single elector. So that's where the savings comes in. It's not based on who we mailed it to that voted. It's all the people that it was mailed to and did not vote. You still have to mail all of those ballots. So didn't want to highlight that. And then I do not believe we had a clear answer on whether we were doing polling place or mail ballot election. So those were my only thoughts.
Thank you. Trust you, Daly.
Ah, voting is a fundamental right of, you know, within our country, state, county, and within our municipality. We need to encourage and welcome as many votes as possible. We know exactly how that is achieved historically and consistently in our town. We need to do mail in ballots. And then in addition to that, when we're talking about budgetary concerns, I I really just want to add perspective to this. When we're talking about the costs of an election, we're saying, what, 14,000? I know we're going to get more specific estimates in the future, but we're, we're not talking about an effort that's going to cost our town hundreds of thousands of dollars or is the super significant costs. These, the difference between a polling place and the mail in ballots is 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 a few thousand dollars. So when we're talking about that as the cost difference, and that would be the reason of limiting and expecting less people to participate in voting, that's not a worthwhile consideration. We need to stay with the historical precedence of mail in ballots and make sure that everyone has the most convenient opportunity to mail to to vote. So mail in ballots is is, in my mind, not even a question that we should be considering. We have, we have to be doing mail in ballots. Of not considering, a question of not considering. We need to do mail in ballots.
Thank you. Trust you, Mason, do you have anything extra?
I I do agree with trustee Daly in this regard. Again, if we budget, you know, the same $32,000 that we budgeted for 2022, if I just look at the and extrapolate those numbers out versus 2020 all the way up to 2024, we're talking about the difference between about 700 or so electors being mailed out. I think that would put us at about roughly $16,500 roughly. Even if we do budget the same 32,000 for 2022, we're going to be darn close to being able to actually have two elections within that amount. So if we, if we retain that same 32,000 that we did in 2022, I I think we're going to be pretty darn close to to where we need to be. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any further, but I guess we need to clarify direction. Let's go around again.
So it, I I think we're at a stalemate.
Yeah.
And that's okay. So part of this discussion and direction we were looking for is related to budget because we are working on our budgets. You'll be hearing from the town clerk next week on their budget and elections is a huge part of that. So what I will be recommend, what I'm recommending is we go ahead and put in whatever number we had in their last year. First, you know, and based on discussion, I mean, this is just the first glance at. First, you know, and based on discussion, I mean, this is just the first glance at um, the budget. It will be refined over the next couple of months, and you guys can have, the Board of Trustees can have more discussion about the polling place versus uh, mail ballot. Maybe we can bring in some more statistics or more information. I don't know what that might look like, but um, I think we are okay with where we're at right now, based on you've you've given some good direction on the other items. It's just that one, that one piece we don't, it seems to be, you know, divided. So um, let's put off giving direction on that piece. We'll go on ahead and use last year's budget numbers for the election expenses for your, for the presentation on Tuesday, and then we can move forward with talking about the type of election as we get further closer into election season.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Muth?
So these are uh, these are doubts you can expect from my desk. Once the sort of decisions have coalesced on the on these different decision points, um, I will provide you with election cost projections by quote, also publish a calendar for the election for the town, and then any other additional information you may require, I'm happy to provide. Um, I just wanted to offer one last opportunity for questions.
Anybody on Zoom land got questions?
No, thank you for all this valuable information. Thank you, Mr. Muth.
All right, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we are going to have a presentation from Ms. Suzette Mallett. Did I say that right? Close. Um, from the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees, for having me tonight. Um, I was asked to come and um, talk to you tonight about, I'm the executive director with the North Front Range MPO, which is just to the south of you. I mean, to talk about a couple of things, and I really would hope that this is kind of a dialogue to answer any of your questions, hopefully, that all of you have about between North Front Range, you are in Upper Front Range. I think you probably know that. Um, but I have a couple of slides to go through, but I'd really like to have this as much conversation as possible, just so I can answer any of your questions. So um, next slide, please. Okay, so the first thing is the MPO formation. What what makes an MPO? So metropolitan planning organizations, there's well over four hundred and ten of them across the United States. They started with a federal transportation authorization back in nineteen ninety one. They're designated by the census. And so the census says if you are an urbanized area by their definition of fifty thousand population or more, you're now considered a metropolitan planning organization, and you're eligible to receive federal transportation dollars. From that, then if you grow to an urbanized area of two hundred thousand or more, then you become what they call a transportation management area, which means you get a little more money, but you also get a lot more requirements that get added on to that. Um, and I'll and I'll show you some of the boundaries here. I got some maps that'll go along with this. So so what happens when we change the boundaries outside of the census? So we can change our MPO boundaries outside of the census. It is, it it is something that has to go through our planning council. Uh, North Front Range MPO has fifteen member governments um, to make up the North Front Range um, planning council. And so to do that, we'd have to have seventy five percent of the population that agrees to make that change um, in in the in the North Front Range and the largest city, which would be Fort Collins for us, um, would have to agree. The flip side of that is Upper Front Range is the rural planning region around North Front Range would also have to agree to give up some of that um, territory, if you will, to and allow it to come into the North Front Range. Um, all that has to be submitted to the governor's office for approval. Um, and then that's that's how those changes would happen. So so I just wanted to sort of talk about how the formation of MPO start, what's going on, um, and how those things are changed. So next slide, please. So this is the North Front Range boundary right now. So you can see this is the fifteen member. This is just showing the municipal boundaries on here. And then if you go to the next one, please. This is the urbanized area boundary. So this is what I was just talking about a minute ago. So this urbanized boundary, these are the ones that are defined by census. So the big orange one um, is the Fort Collins urbanized area. That's over three hundred thousand now in population. Windsor picked up a significant number um, population um, in this last census between twenty ten and twenty twenty. That area grew. Our outside area didn't grow. Um, Greeley also is another urbanized area that could be uh, MPO all on its own, got about a hundred and twenty thousand in population right now. Um, so they could be a standalone, but years ago, they decided we should all be one um, back in the early nineteen nineties. What changed in the census definition, though, is that prior to this twenty twenty, when they're talking about how urbanized areas are connected or what makes an urbanized area, and I love these terminologies, they're really high-tech terminologies that come out of the Census Bureau, they call them hops and jumps. So the hops and jumps, say, you know, if you're like one point five miles from an urbanized area, you get this jump, uh, but you can't do a hop after a jump. I just love all this lingo chain. But anyways, so so what happened is they they took that jump from two and a half miles to one and a half miles um, in the census. So that really shrunk down the amount of sort of area that you could jump over to be connected to the urbanized area. So when they, so what then they say is if you're, you have the area between is non-contiguous, that means, and so I had to really dig this out because Census Bureau website is really hard to find this stuff. Um, but it means that the definition of it's non-contiguous means it doesn't meet the definition. It has to have two thousand households or five thousand in population in that census area. So so that's, so if you see on this map, Wellington, you guys are up there. You're not connected to the urbanized area. It's all of those things that have kept sort of Wellington separate from the urbanized area. So I just wanted to to talk about that. So with that, um, I'll go back, please. Not yet. The other thing that's going on right now that I wanted to to bring to your attention is that state legislation, House Bill uh, twenty-three dash eleven oh one, which was a sneaky little thing that said we want to give um, uh, transit providers free transit fares, help to subsidize that um, during the summertime, especially high ozone days, and also to incentivize riders coming out of COVID. Um, that was a great incentive. They stuck a little piece in there that said, however, C dot, we want you to look at all of the boundaries um, in in the state and make sure these boundaries make sense. And so these these boundaries, and I'll get to this map in just a minute, but C dot is going through this review of boundary. So in in our area, it's upper front, it's north front is the big boundaries. And so we're talking about what makes sense? Do these boundaries still make sense or not? Um, and I, and they do have some considerations that they're talking about, and some of those considerations on boundary is should the North Front Range become, take over the transportation planning area of just Laramo County? Maybe just Laramo County and Weld County? Or just, or you know, or dissolve the Upper Front Range entirely and have Morgan County become part of Eastern. So that's still on the table for their consideration. I don't think they're seriously leaning that way. At least I don't, I, from what I've heard, I don't think they are. Um, but that's that's sort of the direction that we're still working on that. They have to do a presentation of the Transportation Commission on their recommendations in November. Um, so it's coming up pretty quick. So next slide, please. Um, so this is, this is another, and these are boundaries, 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 right? Talking about all these. So this is another one, this air quality boundaries. Um, so this one just shows that we're all part of this, the um, ozone on attainment area, the gray areas, the Denver area, the blue areas, the North Front Range area, or what we call the northern subarea. Um, they did pick up all of Weld County um, just recently, as of last year into that boundary. Um, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because we're talking about boundaries. According to the Federal Register, MPO boundaries can be drawn in a couple of ways. Most typically, it's the urbanized area plus the area they think will become urbanized in the next twenty years, continuously urbanized. The second way is you can pick up the whole MSA. For us, it's all of well, and it's all of Laramo County. That's the two MSAs. Um, and then the third way is you could pick up the air quality boundary, which is kind of messy because it's not all of Laramo County. It's only part of Laramo County. Um, next slide, please, Ethan. So this is the transportation planning air regions in Colorado. So um, you can see you are in the Upper Front Range in that kind of pinkish color up there. Um, right now, you have, you're getting some CMAC money for between Weld County and Laramo County, you guys, because that that air quality map I was showing you earlier that you could, you get some CMAC because it's congestion mitigation air quality money. It rotates between who gets it. Laramo County gets it one time, Weld County gets it another time. Wellington is actually, you don't have a lot of competition. It's Laramo County, it's Wellington, and it's Estes Park. So when it comes your direction, you have three, they have about twenty that that they're talking about having to to deal with in in Weld County. So in the North Front Range, we get CMAC as well, but we also get transportation alternative money. We also get congestion relief program funding, and we get service transportation block grant funds. And all of that comes based on our urban po- urbanized area populations. Um, so right now, Upper Front Range, the administrator of that Upper Front Range has been um, Weld County, has been Weld County forever. Um, I've been doing this a long time in this region. It's always been Weld County since I started in the late nineties. Um, Weld County recently, along with this discussion with the state, talking about potentially changing boundaries. Um. Upper Front Range said, okay, we're not going to make this Weld County-centric. We're going to rotate the chairs, and the chair can you know, have a designee for who they want as representation to the state on the statewide transportation advisory committee. So there was a recent change to their um, bylaws, I think, just last week, actually. So um, that was a a change. And so that's why I'm saying, I think with that change, boundaries are less likely to change. Um, it's probably just going to be more administrative. Okay, so next slide. So that's boundary stuff. So I want to just pause there and see if you guys have any comments, questions?
Any questions from the board? Anybody in Zoom land?
It did have a couple of questions, and so it appreciate you going through all of like the different things. So my unders- if I'm understanding correctly, like in the past, there's been either the household or population numbers that have kept Wellington out. Now, we passed those quite some time ago. I think we're at eleven thousand. So is the primary thing that is keeping us out of the MPO from the things that you listed, is that contiguous, that mile and a half being far outside of that, or are there other things as well from that list?
Yeah, it's your population doesn't really matter. Um, like Berthoud is very much smaller than you, and yet they're in the urbanized area. It has to do with being contiguous to the urbanized area. And so Wellington is far enough out of that contiguous urbanized area that that you're not attached to it, and that's what's keeping you out.
Perfect, okay.
We're not within a hop and a jump.
Right, we're a leap.
You're beyond the hop and jump land, yes.
Okay, um, the second question, and this actually came up in our work session last week with the um, uh, senior center here in Wellington, and I know they've worked and they've had a lot of funding through Laramo County for their um, bus program, which is separate from their actual senior center. But I know, and I still need to understand all of the logistics of that, but basically, funding was reduced by about fifty percent. And so that's causing some challenges. Would there be anything, whether it is in the MPO or in the TPR, that would be able to maybe help with backfilling some of that funding that went away on the transportation side for our senior center?
You know, that's a good question. We two, about little over two years ago, maybe three now, we stood up a mobility program within the North Front Range MPO, and we do get a small amount of money from C dot. And FTA has, they use numbers for their kinds of funding, and so it's called fifty-three-ten funds, um, which is for mobility programs, and we do have a contract with Weld and Laramo County specifically. Um, and they provide the local match that helps with that, but I can, I can ask and see um, what the possibilities are.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Those were the only questions I had.
Questions? Trustee Daly?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next slide, um, I know that you are interested in some transit funding questions. This I pulled straight off the Federal Transit Administration website. Um, and I highlighted the ones that I think are probably most relevant to the town of Wellington. So this, again, they use numbers, the fifty-three-eleven rural formula funds, this is dollars nationwide, right? But but you are all eligible for those dollars, the fifty-three-eleven for operating transit, also the Rural Transit Assistance Program and the fifty-three-oh-four for the growing states. So all of those are potential funding options for transit, and I put that website link um, below. Um, you are, the CMAC money I mentioned earlier, the congestion mitigation air quality, you can also use that for transit operations. Um, I know that in urban areas, it's like you get three years of, they'll fund three years of transit operations, and then you're four and five, you step down and become self-sufficient. I think that I'm a hundred percent sure that rural is, you can operate continuously without having to step it down and give it up. So that's another option. Next slide, please. So the other question that I heard is what's going on with I twenty-five and the interchange on I twenty-five on Highway one um, here in Wellington? So I did dug into this a little bit, and this slide is a snapshot off of C dot's website, and C dot moved a few years back to what they call a pipeline of projects. So they went out for a ten-year look um, at projects and talked about funding all of these projects. So what's on this slide is what is funded through twenty thirty. So um, everything on here is spoken for, and there's a lot of I twenty-five stuff on here in Region Four, you can see that. So that's a lot of segments, six, seven, and eight, that I'm sure some of you have experienced, and the traffic jams that go along with that. Um, so all of that, that's what's in this list. The next opportunity to get on this list is in twenty thirty-one, um, which I know sounds like a long ways off, but that is, you know, the timing that um, that we're talking about as far as that that money coming up. So if you, please go to the next slide.
Question on that really quick.
Sure.
So I know, and I had been doing some reading because I went and did all of the live video viewing and some of the reading, the back reading that Mr. Pipe had sent me when he was still an intern with C dot. Now, it's my understanding that is there a certain percentage of increase in traffic where you can request a reevaluation of like a high-traffic area where that actually can help bump you up the list in certain items?
Ye- yes, and and I will, I think you're getting into maybe the next slide, which is as you guys participate in the Upper Front Range, the Upper Front Range develops a list of priorities. Do you mind going to the next slide, please? Um, that probably, and I I can't even see this one on the screen, so I hope some of you can, um, but it's is Project Three B is is what you have on there. That's that's your Wellington. Um, project is I twenty-five reconstruction, the mainline bridges and interchanges from Laramo County, Road fifty-six up to State Highway one. They call that segment nine um, in in the reconstruction. And so that's what's on the list for Upper Front. Um, I would say that if you want to start promoting what you want in Wellington, there's an I twenty-five coalition, and I don't know if any of you have been attending it, but um, that coalition has been very successful um, in getting money to for segments um, eight through five. It meets every Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month, starting at six thirty, is virtual. Um, and I can send, I guess, Ethan a a link to that one. Um, that is that appropriate? Um, and then you could send that out. But yeah, it is virtual meeting, so you don't have, they usually meet in long months, so um, it's much easier, and it's virtual. So I I would, you know, just say that might be a good place to start attending to start airing your issues on I twenty-five in this area. I do know that um, you are getting some diamond grinding um, on the interstate between here and State Highway fourteen. Uh, well, actually, Mulberry to Al Canyon northbound direction and the southbound lanes, and that should have been starting this month sometime. I don't know if it has. I didn't come up the interstate, so I didn't know. Um, so that you have that one, and they're also going to be doing a freight parking study through when the interstate closes, like where does, because it's just right on the edge of town here. Um, so you know, where does, where does the freight go from there? Um, otherwise, as far as the engineers that I talked about too, and C dot Region Four, they they don't see any plans um, for the interstate changing up here um, in this neck of the woods, but I would just say, I think your advocacy um, is probably really what you need to start promoting um, to get in line for some funding. One of the things that happened is um, on the segments, segments eight, seven, six got funded, and when the part of that funding package is that C dot does a tolling and revenue study because it's a toll lane, right, when you have extended to the third lane. So the tolling and revenue study initially said, yeah, you know, we don't have a, we're not seeing that there's going to be a lot of people using that toll lane, and here's how much we feel like is, you know, going to be, it's only going to be like fifty million dollars of what we're willing to loan against the future toll revenues. Well, that last year, they went back and did that study again, and it's like, lo and behold, there's going to be, they were projecting a lot more people using um, that that toll lane. And so that's what enabled them to say to fund segment five, which is we're, you know, just south of Berthoud right now, past the climb lane down to where it goes three lanes again, that's segment five. So so that's what allowed them to fund that piece is because that tolling and revenue study came back higher. So putting this together, and I would just say, looking at the funding that funds I twenty-five, there is money coming from every source imaginable. I'm trying to get that funded. So think creatively, think outside the box, go after some grants. Um, you know, there's lots think creatively, think outside the box, go after some grants. Um, you know, there's lots and lots of grants out there right now. But you do have to match them. So I'm just, just saying that. Um, but yeah, there are some grants out there, lots of federal grants. Um, just to think about if, you know, if this is something that the town wants to pursue. So but that's what I know about I twenty-five. Um, and I think that's all I've gotten. And I just, you know, like I said, I'd hoping it was conversational and if answer your questions, because I know transportation can be like a alphabet soup all of its own.
Just a question off of my previous one. When you do, say you attend I twenty-five coalition or you want to request a new study done for your streets or high traffic areas, can you just request that be done? Or is there certain processes or steps you have to go through for a new traffic study for high traffic areas?
So, so this is going to get tricky because this is just like town boundaries that nobody sees, right? Certain roads have certain ownership. So state highway one and the interstate is CDOT's purview. That's, that's their road. So, so those roads, then you could ask CDOT, you know, request something of them. If they're not their roads, they're not, they're not able to help you, right? So, but yeah. So I would just, and I don't know who your CDOT liaison is, um, for what the town of Wellington. I'm not sure who that is.
One question, um, at the very beginning of the presentation, you mentioned, you know, TPR. Um, they would have to be willing to release us to go to you. What would hold that process up? What like? Why would they not want to release us?
Um, in the past, the, I'd say, what, four years ago, Wellington was talking about joining an Orford Range MPO. Um, the chair of Upper Front did not want to lose the funding that came along with having Wellington as part of Upper Front. Um, and that's why they're, they're, they not, they were not interested in having Wellington leave Upper Front.
Okay. So more or less like a political pawn for funding. Thank you.
She didn't say a word.
And Wellington doesn't have an option at that?
An option at?
To get out of the?
They have to be released.
Right.
Yeah, it's a vote. It's a vote that happens at Upper Front. And, and I would just say the chair at the time, four years ago, people fell in line with what the chair wanted.
Next question. The MPO, since we're not a member of that, is that one of the main reasons we're always kind of on the last of the agenda up here? For interchanges and such, coming off the interstate? Because we have no political pool at that point?
Yeah, I'd say that's, you know, from, it doesn't matter if you're an upper front or not, or an or front. Um, as far as what, I would just say your advocacy though is hugely important. Um, if you're not the squeaky wheel, you're not going to get the grief.
MPO has a whole bunch more advocacy, correct?
Um, yeah, yeah. I would say there's more people that are involved. The fifteen-member governments have more people in those fifteen-member governments that are advocating. The other thing is, I will tell you, we have a new transportation commissioner, and I don't know if all of you know this, there's eleven transportation commissioners, of course, another boundary map that doesn't match anything, right? So the, the transportation commissioner in our region is Laramore Weld and Morgan County. Um, it was Kathleen Brackey for the last four years. It is now Jim Kelly, um, is our new transportation commissioner. He is brand new to this. He, he does, as he's very plain, that he does not know anything about transportation. And you can probably tell from this little short presentation, there's a lot of mumbo jumbo that goes along with it. So, so he seems like he's really wanting to be involved and wanting to be an advocate for us. Um, but I think we need to bring him along to understand what those needs are. So that, so, and I would, you know, set up meetings, invite him to your meeting, do, you know, he's going to be around. I think, um, he was not expecting to be appointed to this. So I think he has some vacation plans scheduled in September and October. I think we'll see him more consistently, probably starting in November. Um, and I can also send Ethan his contact information as well.
Uh, no, I think my questions all got answered. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
No questions. Great information. Thank you so much.
Chris Mason?
No questions. Really appreciate the presentation, um, and, and certainly the information regarding the I twenty-five coalition. I, I will look forward to joining those meetings. So.
Yeah. Yep.
There is a few of us that do not mind being the squeaky wheel.
Yeah. And I, and I think the other piece is the advocacy with our transportation commissioner. That really was a huge help to get the segments funded that did get funded. Um, and I would say, you know, we did that, but there was also a lot of local government participation. There was over eighty million dollars in local funding that went into that that segment of the interstate that's getting funded right now. So there was a big part of that.
The, uh, transportation commissioner, does he work pretty closely with our local representation? As our?
Congressional, you mean?
Right.
I, I don't know. I will just say this, um, about him though, he is Betsy Markey's husband. So I'm sure he knows the political people, but I don't really know what his direct connections are.
Thank you for this information. And yeah, definitely the coalition, that's going to be super important because we need to start making some noise.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the other piece of it is, and if you, do you mind if I take a, I'll tell you the story. So this is how the funding on I twenty-five got started. Um, we had a flood, um, that came down and, and overtopped the interstate, right? Back in, was it? Two, tw- thirteen, twenty thirteen, that overtopped it, cut us off. The, um, region four director at the time, Johnny Olson, said, I want to go after some presidential challenge grants to see if I can get three of our bridges replaced and one of them just fixed. He applied for the grant, the well, Laramore County Commissioner at the time said, he said, I need money to match this grant. Um, so, um, they, they, Laramore County went after some of that money, got some of that money. This was the time when, um, assessed valuations on houses went up. They said, well, you know, we're not used to using that budget. Why don't we take ten million of that, two million a year over the next five years? And we can use that to match those grants. That all came together. The grant didn't. So the grant did not come through. So then there was a conversation, Laramore County, city of Fort Collins. And the region four director said, okay, now what are we going to do with this money? Should we just take, you know, the ten million dollars and do something? Um, and that, at that time, the, um, CDOT director, his name was Shaylan Bat. Um, he, the region four director said, let me just go ask him. And he said, let's go bigger, go home. Let's see what we can do. Um, for this, some of this money and let's see if we can cobble together something that at least is sort of an interim fix. That's how it started. Ten million dollars is how it started, the conversation. So, um, I'm just saying that the advocacy I think is huge.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
All right. Next will be the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the titles of the items on the consent agenda?
Item D one, August twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Item D two, resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-twenty-three, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, making appointments to the Wellington Housing Authority. Item D three, resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-three, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, canceling the October seventeen twenty-twenty-three work session, the November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three work session, and the December twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second it. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yeah.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The vote is six in favor, zero against. Motion carries and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. Uh, next we will proceed to the action items. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title of item E one?
Resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-three, resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Laramore County and Emergency Management Services for disaster emergency mutual aid and disaster emergency funding assistance.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, will you please present the item?
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees, Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. This resolution-related intergovernmental agreement before you for consideration is with Laramore County for disaster-related mutual aid and emergency funding assistance. Wellington has relied on support from Laramore County and their Emergency Management Services, and approval of this agreement will formalize the arrangement. Most recently, we had a CenturyLink outage that impacted our wastewater treatment plant. CenturyLink was not responding to our request for resolution. And after a call to Laramore County Emergency Agencies, they advised Lumen slash CenturyLink that it was a public safety issue and needed resolved as soon as possible. Wellington was contacted by Lumen Senior Operations Manager within minutes of that request, and the issue was resolved quickly. Although this type of issue is far from a disaster, it is the support we rely on, so operations we are responsible for do not become an emergency. Execution of this agreement will permit the exchange of mutual aid between the town and the county for those emergency situations that require assistance. Wellington does not have an emergency manager, so we rely on Laramore County Office of Emergency Management to provide that support. More than likely, it would be Wellington requesting assistance from Laramore County. Who are not, um, but I could see the opportunity for them to ask us for some help if there was a fire or a flood and they needed some support related to water operations or things like that. The agreement notes that upon request, a responding party may provide personnel, equipment, supplies, or other assistance. Reimbursement of costs may be required after the first twelve hours of response. As of September one, agencies that have approved the agreement include local fire departments and districts, the towns of Johnstown and Tinmouth, the city of Fort Collins, Laramore County, and UC Health. Wellington recently held a town hall where agencies who provide emergency services for Wellington presented on emergency preparedness. That was held on October, April fourth, twenty-twenty-three. There was great information shared at that meeting, and the video was live on the town's YouTube channel for anyone interested. Additionally, one of the Board of Trustees' strategic plan goals is to develop a draft emergency management plan, which is scheduled to be completed before the end of twenty-twenty-three and planned to be presented to the trustees at a work session in early twenty-twenty-four. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Start with Trustee Teets.
I do have one question, and this is involving, sorry, page forty-five. Um, this involves the reimbursement and compensation. I just wanted to verify. It says the first twelve hours of response, we are required to pay fully for that aid, um, without reimbursement unless otherwise agreed upon. Do we have any floating fund or a general fund balance that allows to help cover those costs? Or where do those costs get covered from?
So that would be at the time. It's not something that any municipality really plans for. Um, we can, we always have fund balance that we can pull from. Um, I was at the city of Loveland at the time that they had the, the huge floods. And a lot of times you are putting money out initially, but you, it's, if it's a, a true emergency or a disaster, you end up getting some FEMA funding and things like that, that helps reimburse you for those costs. So during an emergency, you track all of your, all of your staff time that's related to that emergency, um, track all your invoices, materials, supplies you're buying. And a lot of that gets submitted back to FEMA or the state for reimbursement. So it's, I, I have yet to see a municipality that actually has a separate like emergency fund. Um, but it is something that we could act, you know, look at if that's the direction of the Board of Trustees.
That is something that I would be comfortable with, was looking at, and like just an additional, a smaller fund. Just so we're not, like you said, pulling from fund balance affecting where we could invest those funds elsewhere. It's in my opinion, always better to have like a little slush account for emergencies than it is to
Absolutely.
try and panic react to something.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Um, and then the disaster planning, planning, um, page forty-seven. So when they set up, when they're talking about the discussion of planning for emergencies and the cooperative agreement between the municipalities, that doesn't set Wellington's emergency response plan, correct? That's just the Laramore County, how everyone's going to respond. Okay. Perfect. Just verifying. Um, that's all I have. But Mark, that's all my questions. Thank you.
I think this is kind of a no-brainer, just like she's in a Laramore County Sheriff's Department. Uh, these people know what they're doing. It'd be hard for us, I think, to budget every year for a disaster when it does happen, hopefully very, very minimally. And, you know, I've been out here since ninety-two. I've seen a couple of floods already and, uh, you know, most of it's been the county working and they've done a great job. So I'm glad to see us coming aboard on this.
Thanks, Trustee Wigan. Trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Daly?
Essential and the safety of our residences, of course, number one. So, um, fantastic. No question.
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
Uh, so the only question I had is kind of in line with, uh, trustee, um, Teets's comment. Um, I totally understand, like, if we have people come out to help that, we're responsible for repaying that. The one thing, and I know this is government funding typically takes forever. Um, I know it says within the IGA that there's ninety days for them to bill us. And then we have forty-five days to repay them. And then starting on day forty-six, we start getting charged two percent plus whatever the bank current rate is. That was one thing that was a concern. It's kind of goes back to what trustee Teet said. Now, I mean, it's, it's no big deal if it's, you know, it's a minor thing that's, you know, it's fifteen thousand or something. But, I mean, typically the things that I envision, this is a massive fire or something goes wrong that are, you know, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're going to have to recoup. Um, I just I'm a little concerned about how we would, um, be able to one, address whatever damages were done, plus being able to make sure that we pay our debts and we aren't incurring a bunch of interest. So I don't know if there's a way that that's normally done. I just, in the agreement itself, it actually just, it specifies ninety days and forty-five days, which is, I don't know if that's quick enough for federal funding to get out to where we can actually get those payments made. That was the only concern.
Sure. So what happens in an emergency? And, and you know, within those first twelve hours, if this is, if you're going to need to, um, submit a resolution or approve a resolution, um, stating that we, Wellington is in a state of emergency. And once that gets done, we can start working with our other agencies. It talks about, you know, and as trustee teach men mentioned, unless otherwise agreed upon in advance. So we get, you know, six hours into some emergency, we realize that it's, it's, this is a deal and this is going to cost us money and we, we need some help. So that's when, when your town staff starts to mobilize, create that resolution. I have a draft that I keep with me at all times. I've got this little box of of information to keep if there's ever an emergency and, and a resolution having us, um, having us enact a state of emergency is there, which we could call an emergency meeting. Mayor signs it, then, then I'm submitting that information to Laramore County. Okay, now, now we need to talk about what this, what this cost might be and how we can handle those costs as they come forward. And we start negotiating how that works. Um, so there's certain steps that we can take to help guide us through that. And I think that's why they've got those first twelve hours of response. You know, it's kind of a, a done deal. And then anything beyond that, let's, let's talk about that. Let's make some agreements.
Okay. That was the biggest thing. I just wanted to make sure of. And, and I did see that. And I appreciate that, like, the first twelve hours, we, we pay for our stuff, they pay for their stuff. And it's anything beyond that, it's just making sure that there's a process that we're not, you know, getting a bill for half a million dollars ninety days after a massive emergency. And then we're just like, I don't know how to pay this. And then we're now accruing. I don't even know what the bank prime interest rate is, but I'm guessing we're somewhere seven, eight percent interest a year on half a million dollars would be a very significant number. So as long as there's a process around that, that's, that's the only concern I had.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Trustee Gator.
Thank you, Trustee Gator. Uh, I have no questions. No brainer to me. Uh, public, have any, anything to say on this item? Going once, going twice, sold. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-three, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Laramore County and Emergency Management Services for disaster, emergency, mutual aid, and disaster, emergency, uh, funding assistance.
Second?
Any final comments from the board?
No, I am excited about this. So just making sure that we have our butts covered as well.
All right. Zoom land? No?
No additional comments.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The vote is six in favor, zero against. The motion carries and the resolution is approved.
All right. I now close the regular meeting and open the liquor license authority board, time being eight. All right, I now close the regular meeting and open the liquor license authority board, time being eight P M. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mr. Shosse, given the quasi judicial nature of the liquor license authority board proceedings, I would ask that members only respond if they're physically present in the room. Trustee Gator. Trustee Daly. Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum of four.
Mr. Clerk, oh, you can present.
Right and present, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Shosse. Uh, good evening, members of the board, Ethan Moose Town Clerk, it's my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. Uh, before we proceed to, through the, uh, steps of the public hearing, I'd like to just go ahead and offer an opportunity for disclosure of any conflicts of interest on the item that we'll be considering this evening. None, uh, specifically that item being, my apologies. The consideration of a new license, uh, public hearing and application consideration for Old Colorado Brewing Tavern City License. Any conflicts of interest to disclose? Thank you. Are there any, uh, ex parte communications you'd like to disclose? Wonderful. Okay, um, at this point, I'll go ahead and cover the introductory portion of, of this hearing. Specifically, what I'd like to highlight will be the procedures that will follow for the conduct of public hearing. Um, I'll provide a staff introduction, will then offer the applicant an opportunity to present, uh, followed by general questions from the board on the application. Then Mayor Shosse, I would recommend opening and opening and conducting a public hearing, then closing it. Uh, finally, offering the applicant an opportunity to rebut, providing any additional, uh, opportunity for staff comments or questions, deliberation by the board, and then motion and vote on the item. Um, with that stated, I'll go and provide a brief introduction for you on this item. Okay, um, Old Colorado Brewing Company has submitted an application for a new tavern city license. Uh, the town accepted this application as complete on July twenty-sixth and scheduled a notice to public hearing for this application in accordance with the requirements of Colorado Vice Statutes forty-four dash three dash three-one-one. Uh, the Colorado Vice Statute forty-four dash three states, before granting any license, all license authorities shall consider except where this Article Three and Article Four of this Title Forty-four specifically provide. Otherwise, the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, the desires of the adult inhabitants, as evidenced by petitions, remonstrances, or otherwise, and all other, other reasonable restrictions, uh, that are or may be placed upon the neighborhood by the local licensing authority. I highlight this point specifically to indicate the requirement for the applicant to demonstrate the needs, desires, and requirements of the neighborhood uh, before the board in its consideration of their application. Further, in your packet, you'll find additional information per the Colorado Vice Statutes, uh, that would offer an opportunity to de- define good cause when it comes to considering the denial of an application. Uh, and then, in addition to that, a review of the application found the establishment is in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State. The establishment is current with sales tax, and the Colorado Bureau of Investigation reported no issues directly related to the establishment's liquor license applicants. The establishment has legal possession of the premise, and there were no issues or concerns during a visual inspection of the premise, except the display of an expired license issued by state or county authorities. Um, staff's recommendation would be then to hold a public hearing on this application, and if necessary, continue it to a specified date. And then upon completion of the hearing, to consider the four recommended options on the cover sheet in your packet. Um, at this point, I'm happy to take any introductory questions you may have, uh, before we offer the applicant an opportunity to present.
Trustee, trust Wigan.
Nice.
No.
No.
Okay, um, thank you then. At this point, I would like, uh, the applicants, I would like to invite the applicants if they'd like to come forward to present to the board.
Good evening, Mayor. Good, uh, good evening, trustees. Um, my name's Brandon Echol, this is my wife Tara, we are Old Colorado. I'll let her get at it.
Thank you. Um, yes, we're here tonight to request approval of the tavern liquor license to expand our current operations. Uh, as many of you know, we've been in operation in Wellington since twenty sixteen, holding a malt liquor license during that time. Uh, we've got plans to improve our existing space and expand on our beverage menu with the hope of being approved for expanded liquor license. Um, just, our, our, our plan is to essentially rebrand as a re-tap room to a craft, um, tasting room, where we will not only serve our family recipes for beer and so forth, like we've been doing, but also include, um, craft wine and other craft cocktails. It is not our intention to become a bar. We do not expect to expand ours or really our operations much beyond adding additional cocktails and wine to our menu.
Questions from the board? Trustee Wigan.
No question.
Trustee Teets.
I'm excited, excited to see you guys adding a kitchen into this. I know you guys have prep tables and stuff like that, that you do there, but, um, I don't know if you guys, that means you're creating additional foods? Is there gonna be additional menu options?
Um, no, at this time, we offer light appetizers.
Got it.
We, we have a restaurant license, but only to serve appetizers, we don't prep food. Um, we do expect to hopefully expand to additional appetizers, again, stuff from freezer to oven to plate. Um, just to expand on our food options, but not a restaurant, um, not preparing food.
Got it. Um, I had a bunch of questions, because I did see your guys' license switched from a malt into a tavern. So Ms. Garcia and Ethan were filtering a bunch of questions for me. I'm like, well, why is this different? So I thank both of them for answering those additional questions and clarifying the questions that I did have, and I wish you guys all the luck.
Trust Mason.
Oh, very exciting, guys. Um, obviously, ju- uh, just to clarify, the expired license, uh, issue will be rectified, or maybe already has been.
Um, that license is the town license, which we have not received an updated one since then.
Got it, yep, makes total sense. Um, yeah, great, uh, very excited, uh, to see you guys expand, so.
Yeah, I have no questions, that's exciting, good for you guys. Yeah. Um, all right, at this point, we'll open up the public hearing on this item. You have three minutes to speak, state your name for the record, please. Oh, public, uh, hearings opened at eight oh seven P M.
Hi, Dawn Peacock, and I just wanted to state that I love this, um, growth with Old Colorado. And, um, I know that there was, there is, um, potentially another liquor license request coming up where those people are not gonna be regularly open. They're gonna be open only for special events, and so I am grateful for companies getting these liquor licenses that are going to be open normal hours for public to come in, not just paying cus- not just like event-type customers. And, um, I think that's the kind of, um, companies and businesses we want in this town.
Thank you. Nobody else? All right. Uh, I will now close the public hearing, time being eight oh eight P M. Staff, closing comments?
I have no additional comments for you at this time, Mr. Shosse.
Thank you. Guys have any, anything else you wanna deliberate on?
Just happy to see them, uh, expanding their presence in town. I loved it when they had their other locations, so excited about this.
Yeah. Bingo comedy nights.
Yeah.
Trust Mason, nothing. Okay, uh, may I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve Old Colorado Brewing's company Tavern City Liquor License Application.
Second.
May I get a roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. The vote is four in favor, none against. The motion carries and the application is approved.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, now closes the liquor license authority board and reopen the regular meeting, time being eight oh nine P M. Mr. Sapienza, you have any report?
No reports at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, any reports?
Short one, the work session next week will include a draft res- budget, a draft budget presentation from Laramo County Sheriff's Office, that your administrative departments and the library, the vice chair of the Finance Committee and Human Resources will also be presenting on board compensation. The utility rate adjustment discussion has been moved to October tenth in order to have accurate data to present. Um, and October tenth will be a work session and a regular meeting in order to accomplish everything we need to get done. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here, yeah, staff, any question from the board on what was in the packet?
Um, I do have, um, a question regarding, uh, public comment made earlier related to the MOU for Safe Routes to School. Do we have any information at this time on why that?
I, I can provide that information, um, if you, if you'd like to know that at this point. Um, the MO- an MOU was presented, um, I received that on a Wednesday, I believe it was in June. Um, and it needed to be on the board's agenda the following Tuesday. With such a short time to review that MOU, um, it simply wasn't possible to get it in the packet. The reason it hasn't come back since then is that MOU was specific to a grant that Safe Routes to School wanted the town to apply for on its behalf. That grant was due immediately after that meeting. So the subject matter of that MOU was essentially void after that meeting. Um, simply didn't get it in time to review it and have a meaningful conversation. Usually with a document like that, we'd want that presented to the town, or at least I would wanna see that, you know, need more than a day.
Makes sense.
So, a- and since then, we've had no, I've had no further conver- conversation with Safe Routes. Um, I think if it's something the board wants us to, wants us to pursue, I've actually already reached out to their attorney, but, um, that's what happened. Any further questions on that one?
Ms. Garcia?
So the Safe Routes to School MOU, that is on your strategic plan. So, and, and I recognize that, and this is something that's, if, if you're ever in my office, it is on my whiteboard to start to, to look at, and, um, spoke with Lisa Chollet the other day, um, and let her know that, yeah, we, I, it's on, it's on, it's on my radar. Um, it needs to go through the right process as far as approvals and things like that. So, um, one of the things I asked Ms. Chollet to look at was, you know, are there, uh, other municipalities have Safe Routes to School, an MOU with Safe Routes to School? My experience with Safe Routes to School is, it's a great program, but it's generally in the town. It's a, it's a part of generally public works or streets or something like that. So she was looking for that. I'm also doing some research to figure out what, what do we, what do we need in order to have an MOU? And, um, have looked back at the Main Street MOU because that was very successful. Um, so potentially some sort of model off of that. Um, but it is, I understand it is on your strategic plan, so it is something we need to continue to look at. I, I don't wanna take that away from the trustees. So that's, I need to make sure that something comes together that, that you can look at and you're comfortable with, along with the town attorney.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I just wanted to just make sure that that was given a chance to have the full address that it probably needed. Um, my other thing is from public comment, um, looking or addressing some issues as far as the land use code. This was near and dear to me even when I was running as trustee, because I saw a few issues. And I figured it would be a matter of time before someone had started reaching out with some issues. Um, I would really like to look at some of those sections and see what we can't do about supporting small business, increasing sales tax revenue, because that, they're right, people are still doing this. I have three in my neighborhood that do it. I know that. So, but they're not claiming any sales tax, we're not making any benefit from it, but we're paying for the water for it. So I would love to see us be able to maybe ask the Planning Commission to address something that could help ease those restrictions a little, and then maybe bring it back to us to look at. Is that a possibility that we are allowed to do that?
Absolutely, it's something you can look at, and, um, I can work with Mr. Sapienza to provide you some information about the, the, um, public comment that was made tonight. I mean, we've, town staff has worked hard to try to find a way for this to work, and I understand that, I mean, that happens in all communities, that there's some people that just don't play by the rules, and the people that do play by the rules are the ones that end up getting their hands slapped. So, uh, it's, it's, it's a tough situation, but I wanna, I, we agree, we've talked internally very recently about the land use code and talking about, you know, how, how can we make our processes a little more efficient and more business friendly? We definitely wanna be business friendly, especially for those small businesses that reside here in Wellington.
Right, I would love to reward the ones that are trying to do this the right way. Um, I'm not saying let's do like a drastic change to the land use code, I'm just saying let's dive into it a little. Um, and then my last thing that I would like, um, in looking at our public comments we had a previous week was related to relieving, um, the tax burden for property taxes to residents. The House bill that Polis had put through and passed saying municipalities were allowed to adjust their property taxes to help give income, people with struggling incomes, some needed reprieve from that. Um, it's something that I'm interested in diving into, especially if we might be looking at an increase in our water rates this coming year. I'd like to do something, and if this is something we can do, I'd like to, I'd like to help some way. So, those are all my reports.
Got it.
Got it, I just whispered to Dan, I said, that's on you.
Perfect. Okay, um. Trustee Wigan, did I already call on you? Go for it, trustee Wigan.
I agree with, uh, trustee Teets here, especially on the property tax. We gotta do something. Everybody's just getting swamped with all the inflationary factors that's happening now, water, everything else. We gotta give them some relief, and if we have that option, we should explore every avenue on that. And again, with the, uh, in-home businesses, yeah, we gotta make it more affordable and feasible for them too. So I don't know exactly what we gotta do, if we can take that, can they take that to the, uh, and try to get a variance on it? To the Board of Adjustments, is that one of the options that we have? Or since it's a no-no, we can't do that even?
I don't wanna hedge a bet on that one. I'm not a hundred percent, but we will, uh, Mr. Sapienza, we'll get you some information on that. And as far as, you know, your, the property tax reduction and things like that, w- we will, we'll need to look at what the, you know, budget implications are for that. You know, if you're taking, if we're giving a reduction on property tax, that means that's less revenue for the town of Wellington.
But we're not, we're not taking the less than what we got this year. I mean, it's, look, it would be at that point.
I don't know.
Because it sounds like, I mean, everything got bumped up.
And we have the property, we have Prop HH that we're looking at and meeting as a team tomorrow to, to see what those implications might be if, if passed. Um, so there, there's a lot of moving targets right now, and, um, but we'll, we, that is why there are quite a few budget presentations before the trustees, so that you will have plenty of opportunity to discuss that, that it, um, give us, give us your recommendations so we can implement what the Board of Trustees wishes for the twenty twenty-four budget, and if it includes some property tax reductions, then we'll figure that out. Um, so again, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it, we'll present information to you as over the next couple months. And so hopefully by December, like, um, we have it scheduled for adoption on December twelfth. By December twelfth, you'll be comfortable with where we're at.
Right, one last comment, uh, you know, we need to do something with people with fixed incomes, with retirement and all that. Uh, in my business, I'm seeing quite a few people just even moving out of state right now, because they can't afford to live here. So, I mean, we gotta try to make it affordable, so as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wigan. Trustee Mason?
Uh, just to, just to agree with, uh, what Administrator Garcia said earlier, especially regarding Proposition HH and property tax. I, I really think we need to, but, you know, obviously see what the outcome with that stuff is before we make any moves as a board regarding that, so.
Trustee Daly?
Um, as a follow-up to our previous working session, I committed to talking to, um, and brainstorming some of our county commissioners regarding any additional resources or opportunities for a senior center and a senior center transportation. Um, we had a very meaningful conversation, um, with, uh, Kafalis, and we did make the recommendation that we focus on overall transportation needs with a focus on and, and awareness of the senior center bus needs, um, for one of the monthly topics upcoming, in which we will have, um, all the great minds, of course, available for all the great minds, of course, available for, you know, troubleshooting, thinking together for some creative opportunities potentially to fund and make up for lost grant funding for our senior center. So I'm looking forward to those conversations. Those will either come late in the year or early next year. Another conversation that came up that is worth mentioning is some concerns related to 4H and the Laramie County Fair, which were definitely heard, and there's going to be a targeted conversation and community meeting as well to both air grievances and work together, maybe to find some solutions on how to improve the 4H presence at the county fair. That was the major concern. So when those are scheduled and the agendas are set, I do commit to making sure that I get as many people aware of the schedule as possible so they can be there and also participate in those processes. So we did, Patty, Alex and I were at that meeting. We had some great, great conversations on those topics. So we needed to give update on that, and have a couple other outstanding conversations to have as well. So that was that update. Otherwise, this Saturday, Sparchtoberfest is hosting a 5K, their third annual 5K. One of the fun activities following the 5K has always been a dunk tank. Yours truly will be a representation from our board as an opportunity to come dunk me and then also donate money to great causes. So I invite everybody to register for the 5K, and even if you're not doing the 5K, come to the celebration following, which will be a great time as always near Sparch Brewing for Sparchtoberfest. That's it. Thanks.
Make, make sure you have a wetsuit. The water is.
I was thinking that might be the appropriate attire, given the weather.
Yeah, I did not have one last year. I, that was cold. Trustee Gator?
Just a couple of things that wanted to highlight. One, Patty had mentioned our work session. We're going to be going over the LCSO budget. Within that, the indirect costs from the county have continued to rise. Originally, those were supposed to go up to 10%, and we saw that increase above 10% last year, and that went up again. So I am working on trying to get together with John Fan and have another conversation with him. And then I will probably try to talk with John Cofalas as well because ultimately it comes down from the county commissioners. But just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. I think LCSO is doing a fantastic job. I just, if this continues, we will not, we'll get to a point where we cannot financially afford to keep working with LCSO if this just continues to go up by a percent or two every year. So just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that, and then I'll let you know what comes out of those conversations and if there are any ideas on how that could be addressed. Also.
Quick thing there, John. Just, just as some quick feedback. I just want to ensure that if there's any formal communication or inquiries from our town regarding that contract, that it definitely is a consolidated effort and message from our board. So I just, I, outside of question asking those kind of things, I'm totally comfortable with that, and I love all those connections. But I don't want any, you know, formal requests, concerns really stated outside of like, from the board consolidated.
What I'll be doing is in my role as an elected official, I'll be talking to another elected official about my personal concerns. And I'm just letting you guys know, that's all I'm doing. I'm not saying anything is the state of the town of Wellington. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm simply going to be speaking from one elected official to another.
Yeah, I, I think it's great that you're, you're doing that, John. Go ahead and continue with your board report, please.
As I did have a question, especially as we're getting into budgets, can we get an update from Mr. Rhodes on where we're at with finances as well as where we're at with the audits? Because we still, as we're going in, talking about spending money, and at this point, we have no clue where on earth we're at for the year. Because the only reports we have were not accurate, so that's kind of a concern for me. So I don't know if we could get an update, especially as we're going into budget.
So Mr. Rhodes has reached out to our auditors. Again, he recognized that he passes by their office on his way to Colorado Springs, offered to stop by and visit with them if that was what they needed in order to finish up the 2021 audit. And we know that they're working on the 2022 audit because they've requested information. As far as the town's financials, Mr. Rhodes and Janice Foster have worked to finalize the fund balances, so we should be balanced out for 21 and 22. We're just about ready. He's working this week on revenues so that we can have some, a good picture to present to you next Tuesday. I don't know that we'll have the full revenues ready. He's, that's his goal, is to have the full revenues ready for the meeting next Tuesday. It may not be included in the packet, but for sure, we'll have some sort of update for you. Mr. Rhodes will be present at the meeting on next Tuesday so that he can provide an update on where we're at with the financials and things like that. But we are, I'm feeling really good about where we're at, the information he's putting together and tying everything out the way it was supposed to be. Again, he has mentioned time and time again that nothing has been done wrong. It's just had three different people doing it, and everybody does it differently. And so it's going back and making things consistent. And as he's going through the process, he is including Janice in those discussions so that as, as he transitions out, whenever that is, we'll have somebody ready to step in and understand what the process is, what's been done, and why it needs to be done. So thank you, Trustee Gator, for the question, and I know that, that we need an update, and he will be here next Tuesday to provide that.
Good, perfect. And, and I appreciate the work that is being done to do it the right way, so it's not, that's not it. And my concern is more knowing where we're at expenditure-wise, because revenues are going to adjust a lot. This was brought up earlier, Prop HH could change things. There are still a lot of protests on property taxes that are out. So our actual revenue numbers will probably change quite a bit between now and December. So I'm not as concerned about the revenues as knowing when we're trying to set expenditures, the two things we need, what did we spend last year? And then where are we at this year, especially with all of the inflation and cost changes? Those are really important for us to know going into setting a budget as to where we set expenditures, because that's one of the pieces we can control is, okay, what do we choose to spend? So I don't know what the process is or where we're at on that, but that's the piece that I really would like to see us get some clarification on.
So the information you receive next week will include 21, 22, and 23 budget information. So 21 actuals, 22 budget, and 23. Hold on, I'm thinking it through. We just talked about this. My brain is full. I'm sorry. Anyway, you will have 21, 22, and 23. The information will be complete. So I'm hoping that that will suffice for the trustees. They'll be able to see what was, what was actually spent in 21, what was budgeted in 22, and then where we're at for the 2023 budget expenditures year to date.
Yeah, I don't have anything to report. Oh, go for it.
I apologize. I don't know if you guys received my email regarding the Arc of Laramie County's Film Festival that's coming up September 29th, 2023 at the Rialto Theater in Loveland. They're doing live music at six and the movie starts at seven. This is something, registration's required for free popcorn and soda. You'll get a voucher, but you can go on, and we've actually were personally invited by Mr. Monroe, who works with the Arc of Laramie County. This film festival is something that is near and dear to a bunch of people in our community when you look at how do you plan for people with disabilities? The challenges they face every day navigating a community, what they deal with trying to get in and out of local restaurants. So I think it's something that could be hugely beneficial to all of us as trustees who have not spent an extended period of time cruising around in a wheelchair or not being able to do anything but sign. So I think that I would love anybody, I do plan on attending, anybody that wants to join. I will resend the flyer if you guys didn't receive it the first time. But I think this is going to be super fun. That and it's a movie, and it's a theater, and it's live music and food, really. So I just wanted to put that out there again in case anyone didn't get the email.
Great, thank you. Yeah. Awesome. Having no further business, still here, a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Give the vote to six in favor, zero against. The motion carries.
And now during the meeting, time being eight thirty PM.